Trustee Stoneblin here.
Trustee Grum.
Here.
Trustee Rogers, also the tenants' chief, uh, Chief Seaver. Pledge allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, comment? Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Did see you, Roger.
I'm curious why this is a special call meeting instead of this being attended to at a regular board meeting as would normally be scheduled.
I'll talk to you about it after the meeting or before the meeting.
They won't answer anything now, right?
Any other comments?
That's right.
Well, that's the way the meetings are run.
Can I get your name, because I want to put it in the minutes?
Roger. G R U M.
Roger.
G R U M.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Marson, do you want to go first?
Sure.
Uh, Marson Alonowski. Boy, it's very touch up, right?
Thank you. I can read only so fast.
It's all right, it's a long bit.
Speak up.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right. Um, first I'd like to thank, uh, Trustee Stoneblin for coming out to the, um, Lady Woman Voters, uh, forum slash debate that was, uh, held here last week. Um, the two trustees were not in attendance and I know that invitation, not necessarily an invitation, but a postcard notifying of the event, uh, was mailed out to all the residents of the district. Uh, I'd like to make a comment that, that pretty clearly shows the feelings of, uh, those other two members on the support of what the public wants. And the public voted on, uh, a referendum to elect in new trustees. Um, another thing I'd like to mention is going along with, uh, Mr. Grum's comment over there about having a special meeting, uh, this late in the evening. Um, don't know what the board's motives are to expedite whatever it is that you're trying to get done. Um, although it seems kind of fishy, in my opinion, that, uh, you're trying to tie the future board's hands into something that you guys want to decide on in the next month or so. I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nikki Snowblin. Um, if I understand correctly, your purpose tonight is to start the process that will be necessary for selling the building. Um, I've heard that you have a couple of potential buyers. The fact that you called a special meeting tonight seems to imply that you want to get this done as quickly as possible, even though an elected board will be seated in, uh, I believe it's the third week of May. I think it would be very short sighted to sell the building right now. I don't harbor a hope that the Knollwood Fire Department is coming back. Uh, nothing can undo what's happened in the past, but there are so many unknowns at this point about the future. We've only been under this new contract for a few months. Um, we do know that a portion of Knollwood is likely to have longer response times than anybody's very happy with. Um, it's possible that in the next year, two years, whatever, having a fire station in this location could be useful for, um, for Lake Forest, for Libertyville, for Lake Love, for, for somebody. To actually sell the building at this point seems unnecessarily precipitate, and it makes me wonder what the motives are. I don't understand why you're in such a hurry to complete this before the three of you are out of office. We have an elected board coming in. Uh, the, the residents of the district have, have voted to be allowed to elect their own board. This is the democratic process, and for you to try and push this through before you appointed trustees are out of office seems, um, in contradiction to the, uh, the democratic principles under which this country was founded. I don't see why there should be such a big rush. I would ask you to, uh, stop pushing this forward and allow the incoming board to make the decision on how the building should be disposed of if it will be disposed of. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Um, before we go on to number four, I have a couple of things that I'd like to say before we get to the resolution. Uh, one, the reason that we called the meeting at eight thirty tonight is because that's when the attorney could get here. And, um, so that's the timing issue as far as the thought process. Uh, the realtors looked at, uh, leasing this for several months and only had people interested in sell, in purchasing it. We had a MIA appraisal done. We know what the building's worth. There are people interested in it. So get the RFP out there and see what comes in, and then the board can decide, or the future board can decide, or somebody can decide on what to do with it if the offer is right. Right now, all we're doing is racking up bills and paying for an empty building. That doesn't seem to make any sense to me. If there's interest in selling it or interest in purchasing it, we certainly should strike while the iron's hot. In two or three months, those that are interested now may not be interested. Uh, those are my feelings on why we are where we are right now. Has anybody else have anything else they want to say, or do you want to go through the, uh, resolution and then make comments?
I, I'd be happy to go through the resolution for the board.
I didn't put this together.
Thank you.
Uh, the resol- the resolution conforms with the requirements of subsection B of section ten A of the Fire Protection District Act. And in many ways, the, the preamble's, all the whereas clauses are, they set the legal framework of your justification for how and why you're doing what you want to do. And in some, in some cases, we've complied with the statutory requirements. The presentation, the receipt of the MAI appraisal, uh, was, was the first step in the process. We have that, um, which has enabled us to proceed to where we are right now. The resolution goes on to describe some terms, and I'll kind of go over it. Make a determination that, that the property is surplus to the needs of the district and should be sold and disposed of by the board as permitted by subsection B of section ten A. And then section three, which is on page two, contains a lot of the details. Uh, subparagraph A is information concerning the size, use, and zoning of the property. That's, that's taken right from subsection B. Uh, we have to address it. It's addressed only in, in very brief terms there. The detail, the devil, as in anything, is in the details, and that's in the actual appraisal itself. Uh, the appraisal by law is available for public inspection, uh, so, you know, anybody wanting a copy can contact the board secretary or, you know, and should be provided a copy. I mean, it's available for public inspection. What we might want to do is make a PDF and just put the darn thing on our website. That way they can print, print copies till the cows come home.
Great idea.
Um, and that we, we're not killing trees either. So, a lot of the, a lot of the details are in, in, in that proposal. That said, there are some other things that we address. Uh, subparagraph here, the general terms, and some of these are, are worth noting. The board reserves the right to reject any and all bids. I mean, you get all bids for twelve million dollars and you reject them all, you can get all bids for zero dollars and you can reject them all. You could accept them, whatever. There is a statutory requirement, though, that establishes a minimum, uh, a, a minimal amount for the sale, but we'll see what the bids say. And if, if they don't confirm the terms of the sale, we can, the board can reject the bids. The, the sale of, of the property to the winning bid, if any, will be documented. We're going to use the standard real estate contract form. The building is sold as is. No guarantees or warranties of fitness or use for a particular purpose. Um, in addition to the purchase price, the prospective buyer is going to pay all co- all costs and all costs and fees associated with closing. Normally, that's not the, the case in a, in a standard real estate transaction. Costs are split between the buyer and seller here. We're not going to do that. We, we're just saying the district's not going to pay. The buyer's going to pay all those fees. It's a New York style of closing. That's just how they're done. That's, that's kind of a loopback there. Uh, this, the resolution has to be published, uh, and, and tomorrow, presuming that the board approves the resolution, tomorrow I'll go back and look to get it published, and I'm guessing that we can, we could get it published on, uh, Monday, March twenty-fifth. But as soon as I can, I'd, I'd have it published if the board approves bids. There's details about the bids, uh, you know, and the amount, and the key point on the bids is the bids are going to come to me, um, because we only have three trustees and we don't want to send it to anybody there. But if they, they come to me and my address is in here and how we get them, and the bids are due not later than four P M. on Friday, April fifth, so that gives people time to do it. The bid opening, the bid opening will be at the district board's meeting on Monday, April eighth, and will be considered at that point. And if there is a conforming, bids will be considered, and if the announcement of the winning bid, if any, will be made at that meeting. If there's a winning bid, I presume the board will give us direction to prepare the contract, and we comply with the law. And then all the other stuff is in here, is just, we'll update it and...
With the bid, um, uh, and I, and I'm using my, um, I'm trying to remember from the past when I did bids on the road. Does the bidder have to enclose any type of a security with their bid?
Not, not in a real estate one. There are some types of bids.
Like a surety bond?
Like a surety bond, right? Your firm's buying a surety bond, but here, you're buying the property. It's a real estate.
Right, so you don't get like a, uh, you know, ATME Development sends you a, a phony bid for two million dollars and you say, "Wow, you know, we've really got something here," and it's just, you know...
Well, we'll be following up for fraud with ATME if that were to happen.
Okay.
You know, but if, if something comes in that's totally, well, the other thing is, you know, we can have our broker, you know, we can do some investigation on, on, on the bids too, uh, if the board was so inclined.
You could ask for proof of funds.
So, I mean, that, that's, that's part of the, the process doesn't end with the bids. The process only begins with the bids.
Correct.
Because that, the devil's in the details, and let me tell you, the details are in the contract, and the contracts are us. I mean, I know a thing or two about real estate contracts.
Okay.
Um, so, and, and that's why, if, if you, if, if the, if there's a winning bid that's approved by the board at the meeting on April eighth, I'll guarantee you, it's not going to be sold by April eighth, or April ninth, or, or maybe even a month after, because especially with commercial properties, there's lots, lots of gates that buyers will normally want to do.
Protect themselves.
Sure.
So, anyway, that, that was kind of the nickel tour of the resolution.
Okay.
Now, what I would propose, because subsection B says we, uh, publish the resolution, the first three pages of the resolution, not the secretary's certificate, but the first three pages of the resolution are what we're going to publish in the newspaper. It's going to be a little lengthy, too bad, so sad, as the law requires.
Okay.
Brian, I have a concern.
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't see how we can declare this building surplus at this time. Is, is the district headquarters, it is where we have our meetings, um, our offices are here. While, I'm sure it is possible for us to do something about that, we have not done something about that, and I don't understand how you can declare something surplus until you've taken care of that. This is not surplus. This is where we need it. This is our offices. This building is in use by the Fire Protection District.
That's a good point.
Well, all I would say is that I know that Chief Carrani was offered a space, uh, at Station Three, so, I mean, it's not like this board will be without office facilities. But that hasn't, we're making a legal declaration of, of this being surplus now. That has not been dealt with. And I think you have to do this, you know, have respect for, for legal process, and we have to do this, can't declare it surplus until those arrangements have been made and committed to.
Well, I don't see, I, I don't see why you, you can't, because you don't know if you're going to accept the bid, and if you accept the bid, if you get a bid, um, it's a question of a legal, of a legal process. Okay, then there's the question. Is it legal to...
Declare the building surplus?
Yeah.
I mean...
I, I don't know where it says that you have to have a new office before you can declare something surplus.
It does, you have to have a mailing address.
Right.
You, you have to have an, you have to have an address.
And until the building is closed upon and sold, you have a mailing address?
It's still the district headquarters.
Right. So if, if you had, hypothetically, you had a buyer, and hypothetically, you accepted the bid, you could make arrangements between that and the closing time to look for a new office?
Well, I think Carl, 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 Carl has a good point, and, and he's right, but, I mean, it, it answered, I mean, theoretically, if the board approved the resolution, the board, you can direct the secretary to forward, you know, change the address for the district for all correspondence to whatever you want.
Right, you can do it from the post office.
Right.
But it's, again, it's, it's about legal process and order. You can't declare it surplus until those issues have been dealt with. They have not been dealt with. They can be dealt with. Absolutely, they can be dealt with, but they haven't.
Well, but I don't think, I don't think it necessarily has to be a sequential. I think, I think it, it could be done simultaneously. I mean, I kind of agree with Dan. I kind of agree with Dan. There, there is no guarantee you're going to get a bid that's going to be acceptable.
But we still could have declared the building surplus. I mean, I can't declare a fire truck surplus and still use it for a month. It's, it's got to be done with it.
Well, that, that's not totally true either.
Right, yeah.
Well, I mean, I have to, you know, you are our attorney, so I'm raising this issue. You say it doesn't have merit.
I don't, I, I don't, I, I mean, given the fact that the services are now provided by contract, intercer- intergovernmental agreement, by agreement, and there's nothing maintained in here other than a mailing address and a meeting location, I agree with you, Carl, that I think the district board needs to have a solution for where's our mail addressed or where our records kept and all that. But, I mean, they haven't till April eight to come up with that because no, no bid's been accepted. I mean...
And from what our realtors told me, at least one or two of the bidders has, uh, understands that and is interested in providing an office and a space for her to have her meetings as part of their, part of their offer. I don't know who those people are, um, but that's what he's indicated when he's walked into the building, that that's one of the board's concerns.
I think that should be part of this resolution, that we're going to do, that, that that is a requirement, if we're going to do it that way. Again, it's, it's all well and good to say, well, we can deal with this, we will deal with this, but this building becomes surplus the minute we pass this. That's it. It's done. It's surplus.
And if it does, and if it doesn't sell...
It's still surplus.
And the new board comes in, they can make it not surplus, correct? They can say, "We decided not to sell it."
Right.
There you go.
I still object to, to the, the idea of declaring it surplus when it's still in use. It, well, and it could continue to be in use. We don't know yet, but we're not committing to anything at this point other than saying that...
In order to get bids, we're making it surplus. If the bids all come in at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then...
It's a moot point.
Then it's a moot point, and the board says, "Okay, we went through the bid process. We got crappy bids. We're not doing with it." And the new board takes the building and takes it over and pays for an empty building and keeps having their meetings here, and there's no harm, no foul. If the right bid comes in, you could even, if, if, if ATME comes in and wants to, to, to buy this, you could even accept their offer contingent upon an office in use of the room, correct?
Well, I, I, I mean, it, it, you know, if, if, perhaps you could address Carl's concern by amending the resolution and adding a, a subparagraph G under general terms that said, "The board reserves the right to, for continued use of the address, administrative office, and filing storage space." And leave it at that.
I have no objection to that.
And if you make that as part of the general term, when the person sells it, they're selling it, if, if a person buys it, they're buying it subject to that understanding. Now, I, I'd have to go back and fix this and add that, add that language in here, but, I mean, you passed the resolution, it's amended.
Do you have an objection to that?
I, I don't object to that. Do we want to put a timeframe on that? Say that a contingent upon allowing that to happen for six months, eight months? Or do we want to make it permanent?
I, I don't think you limit that because you don't know. I, I mean, you, you, you may have a, you may, the board may elect to follow Chief Carrani's option and transfer all that, transfer the flag to Station Three.
Well, I'm just thinking, if somebody has intention of bidding on the building and has a use for all square feet of it, uh, it might keep them from submitting a bid, but if they knew it was a temporary thing, uh, they might go ahead with it. Because certainly finding a place to meet, uh, you know, at that point, could be once every four months.
I was going to say, how about a minimum, a minimum of a year instead of a maximum? That would give the board twelve months to find other place to have an office and a meeting. And again, Chief Carrani, way, way, way back when, said that, uh, Libertyville Fire District meets there, and they could find a way to have our board meet there should that need ever arise.
It is out of the district.
I don't, do you have to meet in the district?
I don't know that you have to, but it still seems appropriate to meet in the district with your office.
Okay, whether you could maybe meet at the township office?
And crafting something here.
Okay, we'll let you craft.
Three of the four people that are looking at the building, I already told them that you guys are going to need this for voting, board meetings, and you're going to need an office.
There, there you go. Do they know that?
Okay, we'll see how I do on this. What, you know, just, the first cut on, on a subparagraph G under B, general terms, "The board reserves the right to retain use of administrative office space for file storage, public meetings, and related..." receipt of mail, I got to put receipt of mail. "Receipt of mail, file storage, public meetings, and related district business."
For a minimum of one year. So guarantees the board one year to either work something out or make other arrangements. Shouldn't even get that far.
From one year from any date of sale.
That's it. Yeah.
Nobody says you're going to sell.
Right, that's right.
Carl, does that address that?
I think that addresses that issue. I do have another issue.
Well, okay.
Not necessarily an issue, but I have some questions.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we really want to understand the timeframe on this, so, you know, I mean, the, the after April eighth timeframe.
Okay.
So, this goes out, gets published, bids come in, um, we open the bids at the meeting on April eighth.
Okay.
And may very well, at that time, vote to accept, this board may vote to accept a bid.
Okay.
Okay. And you, it said, "It will take a while to get to the point where you have an executable contract and they're coordinating a schedule of closing."
Correct.
Some period of time. Because of what's going on, I'm very, very concerned about that, that a board will be elected on April second. Six days before this happens. They will take office on, you know, February of May.
May twentieth. One is on the twentieth.
And then May twentieth. So I, I really want to understand, because I, again, as you know, I feel, I really feel it's wrong to take this decision completely out of their hands. I think, I think it's very disrespectful to the residents of the community and the electors of the community to do so. But what happens as you, if this board accepts one of these bids and that process is started, what are the, but not completed? What happens when the new board comes and they go, "We, you know, we don't want to move forward with this at this time. We want some time to really sit and think about it." What, how do you interrupt that process? What are the, what are the implications of interrupting that process? I really want to understand that.
Well, if I had a crystal ball, I could, you know, I'd love to have the crystal ball to answer that. I don't know, because it depends on what the other, this other prospective party would do. The other prospective party could say, "That's fine. How long do you want?" And it was, you know, but, and then maybe that's it. The other, the other party could say, "We have..." A large part depends on whether you have a contract. The mere fact you have accepted a bid, you don't have a contract. It's an enforceable document. The contract will take, normally, the person proposing it will complete the contract and offer it as a proposal to the seller saying, "Here's, here's our terms."
Okay.
Or, you know, "I can do it instead of that," whatever. First you have to have a contract, and in the terms of the contract, if it was the board's direction, we can include provision in it. You, you could back out. The problem is, if you don't have a contract, you're not backing out on anything. You're not committed to anything. You accepted a bid, good. What are they going to hold you? Nothing. You've accepted a bid. Once you have a signed contract, now you've got a different matter. Once the contract is signed and accepted by both buyer and seller, now you've got the question of, is the contract enforceable, which presumably it would be, because their attorney will work with us and, you know, will come up with a, a contract which the board will have to approve the contract. Just because you approved it doesn't mean you approved a contract. And once you have a, a signed contract that's approved, now you've got a contract. Okay? Have people ever broken contracts before? Yes, people do breach of contracts all the time, and all that does is gets us an opportunity to go back to Waukegan and be in court, you know, for breach of contract. "No, we don't want to sell it. The new board has changed, has a change heart. We don't want to sell it." Okay, well, then what do we, they'll sue for specific performance. "No, we really want to buy this," you know, and the new board says, "No, we really don't want to do it." You know, "The prior board wanted to sell it. We don't want to sell it. We, we changed our mind." So you end up going to court, and they sue you for breach of contract. They sue you for breach of contract and specific performance, meaning you sign the contract, follow it, sell it, or breach of contract, you know, we get damages. What are the damages? And I, that, I can't, I can't see that. I mean, that, my, my crystal ball isn't that good.
Well, what does your crystal ball tell you about being able to execute a contract for May twentieth?
My experience with commercial properties, which this is, is, I'm not sure that's possible. Commercial properties are not, they're not like buying a house. Commercial properties will, will get attorneys involved, not, you know, some who are union to government, but, you know, private entity particularly. Commercial, commercial entities bring with it liabilities under laws like the Environmental Protection Act. Any buyer assumes liability for any issue, any environmental issue that may have happened on this property at any time.
It wasn't a triple basin.
You know, and knowing, noting that, there's been motor vehicles stored and maintained on this property, and you've had drainage on this property and all that, if I were the attorney advising the buyer, I'd, I'd be really careful about accepting it, particularly because I said, "We're selling it as is." You know, "If that ball's on your court, we're out of here." And phase one environmental studies are not something that are simply done. You, you, you don't come in one day and finish it the next day. I, I can't tell you how long it would take here. This is not, I've done them on large, multi-acre, multi-structure properties where, where it took a lot of time. I don't know how long it would take here, but I, if I were advising the buyer, I would tell him, I wouldn't tell him to buy into that because you're buying in that liability. But that's, I'm, so, so that's, I mean, I, I can't tell you. It's not uncommon, I mean, a quick, a quick contract would be, I, I'd tell you, would probably be about four weeks. That would be a quick contract.
Well, again, I'm very concerned because there's been a tremendous effort to accelerate this to light speed to get it to this point, so that this board, you know, can force their will upon the next board and that, without allowing them to have any say in something that really is going to be critical to, um, the future of the district. So I have very little faith that there's not going to be a tremendous pressure to get this done in four weeks, and I have great concern about that. I mean, when you look at all, what, all the hurdles that you've just described and all the uncertainties, we shouldn't be voting on this tonight. We let this, it's been teed up, you know, there's some people who are interested, do the uncertainty that they're looking at is like they can get, you know, into the middle of a contract negotiation, you get... you get the rug pulled out from underneath, and you think they might want to hold off just a little bit and see what the pleasure of the next board is.
Well, I don't see any reason not to see if there's enough interest or if there are not bids that are acceptable. I think it would be irresponsible of us not to do that, and to leave the building empty and costing us thousands of dollars a month does not make any sense.
I think it does for the period of time we're talking about, because it has a very, very long tail on this decision.
So, not like I, it concerns me from what's going to be said, but the fact that I didn't show up to the League of Women Voters, I hear that I don't, I don't care. So if I leave this building in the hands of everybody and do nothing, I can only, I can only imagine the comments of, "Oh, the other board, they left us with an empty building and bills and..." Hey, you know what? I've said this from the beginning, I'll say it to the end, I'm going to work until the day I walk out of here. When I walk out of here, I'm going to leave it on the table. So, if there's a, if there's a bid and it's a good bid, I'm going to accept it, or I'm going to recommend to accept it. If it's a crappy bid, I'm going to say, "Well, we got crappy bids. Now you know what you got? You got a building, you're not getting good bids on it." You know, I wish you all the best. So, that's the way, that's the way I look at it, so. No matter what, you know what, Carl, no matter what I do, it's going to be wrong, so I'm going to do what I think is right. So, if there's any further discussion, make a motion, we accept Resolution 201901 authorizing the sale of surplus real estate.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
We'll call a vote, Trustee Grum.
Aye.
Trustee Snowman.
No.
Trustee Rogers, aye. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
Hold on, catch him up here. No, that's it. What I'll do, I'll add that subparagraph G in, and I'll email everybody a copy of the signed document, sign one for me, too.
All right, most adjourned at 9:02, all in favor?
Aye.
So, who made it? I was just going to say, who made it?
Bob made it.
I made it.
Carl, I guess, you accepted it? Okay, seconded.
And then, there's three yeses.
Two adjourned, yes.
Okay, where's my other page?